Okay, good morning and welcome to our Queensborough President Land Use Public Hearing. This hearing is taking place both in person in the Borough President's Conference Room and on our YouTube channel @QueensB and you can go ahead and search that on the YouTube search bar. I am Queens, sorry, I am Vicky Garvey, the Director of Land Use for Queensborough President Donovan Richards and I will be chairing this hearing on his behalf. For those who wish to testify virtually and haven't already pre-registered to do so, please visit our website at queensbp.nyc.gov. Written testimony is welcome from those who are unable to testify in real time. All written testimony must be received by 5:00 PM today and may be submitted by email to planning2, that's planning and the number 2, at queensbp.nyc.gov or by conventional mail sent to the Office of the Queensborough President at 120-55 Queens Boulevard, Room 226, Kew Gardens, New York 11424. Lisa, if you're there, would you please review how this public hearing will proceed?
Certainly. The public hearing shall be conducted in the following manner. The applicant will give a description of the requested zoning actions, the proposed project, and respond to any questions from the chair. The floor will then be opened for public speakers. Please listen for your name to be called. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak and deliver a testimony. When you are called, please identify yourself for the record and if you are formally speaking as a representative or a member of a group, the calendar item or application you are speaking about, and whether you are for or against the item. Then you may begin your testimony. Please note that a signal will ring at the time when your time is up. At the discretion of the Chair, if there are a large number of speakers on any particular item, it may be put on second call. Speakers for and against that item may also, excuse me, will be called on an alternating basis. Please note, if you are testifying virtually and you must keep your camera on during your testimony and display your name accurately on Zoom. Thank you for your cooperation.
Thank you, Lisa. The Chair reserves the right to ask speakers for clarifications or further information regarding the applications or comments. So go ahead, Lisa, and please call the first two calendar items which are related.
Sure, calendar items number one and two, ULP number 240079ZMQ and ULP N240080ZRQ. The applicant is 14-10 Beach LLC, affected community board number 14. Applicant, you may begin your testimony, your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you and good morning, Richard Lobell of Shove-Lobell PC for the applicants. With me today for my office, Amanda Ionati. We are here with Sam Zirkiev, who is the project applicant, as well as Frank Quatella, the project architect, and Christina Zapansky from GZA Geotechnical Environmental. I will be presenting in terms of the land use rationale. Frank will then discuss architectural merits of the project, after which the entire team is happy to answer any questions. So you see before you the 1410 Beach Channel Drive rezoning. Next slide, please. This is just a summary of the application. There are existing R5 and R5 C24 districts, which would be rezoned to R6A and R6AC24. Actually, there's no commercial overlay. So it's R5 to R6AC24 and R6A. There are roughly six lots involved in the rezoning. And the rezoning here would allow for the development of a new seven-story plus-seller mixed-use commercial community facility and residential building. There would be roughly 110,000 square feet and 118 dwelling units. This would also allow for reconstruction and improvement to the Glory Light Tabernacle Church, which currently exists on the site, as well as for an allotment of commercial floor area for some new retail space along Beach Channel Drive. In addition to the rezoning action, we would be asking for a zoning text amendment, of course, to allow for required affordability in the form of mandatory inclusionary housing. Here, out of the 118 dwelling units, that would create approximately 30 affordable units at option one. Next slide. So here are the zoning map, I'm sorry, the numbers behind the proposed development. You notice there's a seven-story plus-seller building that would be proposed at 110,000 square feet of floor area. This would be inclusive of 4,800 square feet of commercial use, 4,400 square feet of community facility use, which again would be intended for the house of worship, and at roughly 100,000 square feet of residential use. Street wall would be at 65 feet or six stories with setbacks at the sixth and seventh floors, and 81 parking spaces would be included as part of the development in the cellar level. There's 118 units proposed, most of those being one bedrooms and 30 affordable units pursuant to option one. Additional sustainability measures are proposed for the site. Now, the next slide is the zoning map, which demonstrates, and we'll be able to see it a little bit closer on the area map, the existing zoning of the site at R5, which has existed here since 1961. This is poorly zoned in terms of the opportunities for the site and for the area, particularly in light of surrounding transportation and the street system, as we'll talk about in the area map. We would also note the downtown Far Rockaway Special District to the east of the site, inclusive of denser zoning districts than the current R5. The next slide is the tax map, which demonstrates the development site, which sits at roughly 28,000 square feet and is highlighted in red, as well as the adjacent five or four lots, which would be included in the rezoning action. The commercial overlay would only extend within 100 to 110 feet of Beach Channel Drive. The next slide is the area map, which we think tells the story well in terms of why this is appropriate for an appropriate rezoning for the area. We note the R6 and R71 densities to the east of the site. Particularly here, while transportation is never that great in this area, here we've got the Long Island Railroad within 200 feet of the site. We've got subway service within a third of a mile of the site and bus service along Beach Channel Drive. So given the access to the site, the wide frontage along both Beach Channel and MAO as well as the fact that it is central to transportation, this really makes for what would be a, what we think would be a meritorious rezoning and the creation of both affordable, as well as generally market rate units and some new commercial space. The next several slides show pictures of the site. Again, the existing church building, along with parking and a sale of used cars. These are not particularly job-generating sites in terms of the commercial use and the church needs some updated space. So this is really accomplishing several goals in addition to the residential, allowing for this additional commercial and community facility space to operate at the site. The next several slides show parking area, as well as some of the additional surrounding properties. With that, we include plans and materials. I would defer to Frank to discuss those and after that, the applicant team is happy to answer questions. Frank?
Hi, good morning, everyone. Frank Quatella here, architect representing the Beach Channel Drive rezoning. I'll talk a little bit about the architectural aspects of the building as it is a six-story base height, which is the street wall of the building, and then a setback happens at the sixth floor, proceeding up to a seven-story maximum building height. As Richard mentioned, we are providing ample parking, both surface parking at the rear yard and parking at the cellar space. We are also including many of the provisions that relate to flood zone or at least mediation if we were to encounter another storm. Such things as floodgates on the commercial components of the building. All of the utilities and the mechanical units for the building will be located above that proposed floodplain elevation. As far as context goes, we do have a mix of apartments at this point, ones, twos, and studios. Lots of recreation space for the building, both at the rooftop and on some of the lower stories. We're providing terraces for the individual units, as well as some of the combined space, laundry facilities, trash chute, compactor area, and green roof, which is part of the Local Law 9294. So at the upper roof, we are providing roof terrace for the tenants and occupants of the building, green space and potentially some solar panels if the client is willing to proceed that way. Hand it back to you, Richard.
Thanks, Frank. So just to reiterate, we've got a site here currently underdeveloped in terms of available floor area, which is central to transportation, has excellent access in terms of street access, and would provide for some meaningful affordability in terms of MIH. You can see from the area generally that this is not an area in which you have lower density in terms of surrounding building typology. You can see in the R6, R71, as well as to the north of the site, there are existing six to seven stories and greater buildings. So we feel that this is really appropriate for the site. We'd be excited to move along with this project and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thanks so much. So my first question is, how big would the recreational space be on the rooftop? Like approximately the square footage?
Frank, are you able to address that?
Yeah, it's approximately 7,000 square feet. We haven't gone into the actual mechanical space that's allocated for air conditioning compressors or some other, some of the other infrastructure within the building, but around the 11,000 square foot footprint, that would be public rooftop access.
Got it. Okay, and then you said terraces along some of the units. Is that the green space that I see?
That's at the setback, which is at the sixth floor. Those are private terraces. There are some to the east and west as well. And a couple of them terminate or they're accessible by the public hall. So if one of the residents of the building chooses to not go to the roof or just go to the floor where the apartment is, they could just go to the end of the hallway, simply open the door, and there's a public roof terrace there as well.
Okay, and when you say public, you mean that's open to all tenants?
The residents, yes. And it's not, I'm sorry, it's for the tenants of the building. It's not, it's not for the general public, no.
Okay, understood. So I believe Board 14 voted on this item outside of their community board review period, but I was just hoping you could speak to some of the concerns or comments that they had made at their meeting?
Sure, happy to do so. So, you know, having been before Community Board 14 many times, as the Queensborough President's office is aware, there's currently a moratorium from the community board that has existed since June of 2022. And so despite the merits of this project, many of which were recognized in conversations with the community board, they refused to potentially approve applications of this nature. So I must first note, Ms. Garvey, that we understand the community board's viewpoint, but we also understand that a moratorium should be based on facts and data and studies. And so we have, for the last several years, attempted to obtain the reports upon which their moratorium was based. And more specifically, there was a study that was promoted and sponsored. It was to be performed by Hester Street and would discuss sustainability in the area and potential, the potential for density changes in light of issues and potential flood risks and such. That study, despite the fact that we had been waiting for years and followed up diligently, was never produced and indeed will never be produced, from what I understand. So we're in a position where we were already going to be rejected by the community board. Despite that, the discussion from them was around the nature of potential givebacks for the site, as well as the nature of the unit sizes. With regards to the unit sizes, again, we are heavily weighted in terms of one bedrooms, but discussed with the community board that we did have flexibility for unit combinations to reduce those number of units and indeed would plan to do so. And the second point that they made was with regards to our, what benefits we were providing. There are tremendous benefits that we are providing in terms of the updated community facility space. Glory Light Tabernacle is a longstanding church in the area, who would be able to perform their good works to a greater degree in the event they were able to obtain this updated space, as well as commercial space in the form of local retail and potentially a food store and such. So despite those conversations, the community board was, did vote this down and quoted the moratorium as the initial rationale for their rejection in their opinion.
Okay, understood. Thank you for recapping that. Sorry, I lost my train of thought. So I guess I just want to mention MWB hiring goals. I know we've, that's something that we always mention at these hearings and I just want to make it clear, we are always advocating for at least 30% MWB. Obviously, it's, you know, every project is different, but we try to advocate for that percentage. Oh, I, sorry, I remember my original question, which was, you mentioned floodgates over the commercial area. Does that include the community facility space as well, the church or the house of worship?
That does, yes. The only place where we're not proposing floodgates, and it's a code issue, are the residential entrances, which they'll be protected against flooding because we're going to put some internal steps in the building to not, or to mitigate some of the flooding effects if it were to occur.
And then just to clarify, does this building fall under Appendix G of the building code, where you have to floodproof in general, or the gates are sort of an ad hoc decision?
Well, we are outside of the flood zone, but we are within, I guess, the 2%, 500 flood year plane. So we're providing measures, not ad hoc, but I guess it's Appendix G compliance. Yeah, so we have to do it. Yeah, it's mandated.
Okay, great. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and move on to the public testimony piece. So I believe we have the district manager from Board 14 sign to speak. Tiffany, do you mind promoting her to panelists so that? Just bear with us a moment. Ms. Johnson? Okay, so we can always come back to her. Oh, okay, thank you. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and promote the district manager and she's going to deliver her testimony. Thank you, everyone, for bearing with us. We are down a few crew members, so just bear with us a few moments. We just have to do something from a different computer. Our topographical director, Mohammed, actually has a question for our applicant.
Hi, good morning. This is Mohammed Sadek, Borough Engineer, Queensborough President's Office. I have a quick question about, you mentioned about the garage in the cellar. What's the elevations from the ground level? And also about, do you have any flood mitigation study with the DEC or USGS?
I can answer that question. We're about minus 10 from grade. I don't know the exact datum or the exact elevation number, whether it's above or below zero, but it's approximately 10 feet below sidewalk level. We are going to provide floodgates at the garage entry, but it's only storage, so we're permitted to have the parking or accessory parking at the cellar without any of the building infrastructure being located there. And we do not have a study from DEP.
Thank you. Okay, so now I believe we were able to promote Felicia Johnson to panelists. If you're able to unmute and begin your testimony?
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, you're a little low, if you mind speaking up just a little bit.
Sure. Good morning. My name is Felicia Johnson and I am the district manager for Community Board 14. So I will begin by stating that, yes, the developers gave a very thorough presentation to my land use committee, which then brought their recommendations to the full board in which we voted on at our October 14th full board meeting. And the motion was defeated. There are several concerns that we have, and yes, the moratorium that was issued was cited as the number one. The reason for the moratorium that people tend to overlook is the fact that while we continue to develop an upzone in only downtown Far Rockaway, the eastern end of the peninsula, no one has made any improvements to the overall infrastructure of that area. Beach Channel Drive is not known for flooding during regular rainstorms. It currently has a housing development, burn houses. And if you look at their pictures, large-scale development that happened from the overall upzoning of downtown, from the downtown Far Rockaway plan. However, those apartments, although called affordable, are not fully rented and the retail space remains vacant, giving it a ghost town appearance. So while we were talking about what the giveback for the community could be, we were very concerned about the issue regarding retail because the rents are unaffordable and there are no businesses that are coming into all these developments. It have also concerns about evacuation, as there is no real evacuation plan for the Rockaways, even though there is one allegedly for this. But we are concerned that in the event of mass evacuation, again, as we were supposed to have during Superstorm Sandy, that continuing to add this amount of people to the peninsula is going to create a public safety hazard. We have already been slated for over 10,000 units of housing, not even including this particular development. This is a new one. We received maybe about 3,000 of our units so far. So we just feel that this is an area that is overpopulated. Maybe the density is entirely too much. The retail space is not going to be adequately utilized because the pictures they're showing you in the background, all that retail space in the back is still vacant from the time Far Rockaway Village has opened. The apartments are not affordable because the AMIs need to be adjusted, which is not their issue. But I'm just saying that that's one of the reasons why apartments are still vacant. And there's also an environmental concern regarding the IMT concrete manufacturing plant that's across the street and we're currently going through some issues with the state regarding the environmental hazards that have been identified with the tenants in Redfern Housing. And we did ask about that at their presentation on October 14th and they were unaware of it. And so we feel that until some more information is gathered, until we even get a resolve from IMT and the environment giving us a high cost of asthma and other health-related issues because of what the type of work that they do, that we don't feel that this is a place particularly for yet another development without any real other infrastructure issues going on.
Thank you, thank you, Felicia. Your three minutes are up, so sorry if you'd like to wrap up.
That's okay. Thank you. I'll keep that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate your comment. And we are aware of the issue with the asphalt plant. Our office is very much aware of it and we are hoping to continue conversations to figure out how to mitigate these issues with the asphalt plant. So with that, I don't believe we have any other speakers on the line. So I'm going to go ahead and close this item. Thank you so much, applicant team, for being here today. And then we're going to move on and call the next two related calendar items.
Calendar items number three and four related. ULP numbers 260063PCY and 260064PSY. The applicant is the Department of Environmental Protection and Department of Citywide Administrative Services. The affected community boards are community boards number two and five. Please begin.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good, good morning. Thank you, thank you all, thank you Borough President's team for giving us the time to present. We're going to be discussing the Newtown Creek CSO Combined Sewer Outfall Storage Tunnel Project. We're going to go ahead and introduce who's here. You can go to the next slide. Okay, so on this presentation, I'm Alfonso Lopez, Queens Commissioner for DEP. We have Kate Eddin with the Bureau of Engineering Design and Construction, Terrell Estenson with the Bureau of Environmental Planning and Analysis, and David Lee with the Bureau of Environmental Planning and Analysis as well. To give you a sense of what we're going to be going through, our agenda is to provide a background on the Newtown CSO Storage Tunnel Project, an explanation of the combined sewer overflows, CSOs, and give a project scope, a briefing on forthcoming ULP actions and schedule, and then take any questions. If you look at the two images here, you'll see the area in question in the red square on the left. On the right, you'll see the delineation for the two community boards, two and five, as we referenced previous. And in yellow, the Newtown Creek WRRF, the Wastewater Resource Recovery Facility. And I'll hand it over to my colleague, Kate.
Hi, everyone. Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. So today, we're going to be talking about the Newtown Creek CSO Storage Tunnel. And to get us started, I want to talk about the main drivers for this project, why DEP is doing this project. So DEP is under a consent order, a CSO consent order with New York State DEC. And that was to provide long-term control plans or LTCPs that we developed in order to come up with the best solution for reducing CSO or combined sewer overflow to our waterways. And for Newtown Creek, the solution was to construct a storage tunnel to hold CSO. The other driver is that Newtown Creek is a Superfund site and New York City was listed as one of the potentially responsible parties for Superfund due to the CSO that enters the creek. You know the next line? So just so we understand about CSO, so when we say CSO, we mean combined sewer overflow. New York City, the majority of New York City's sewer system is a combined sewer system, meaning that when it rains, the stormwater goes into the same sewer system as our wastewater and it can overflow during a rain event, causing this phenomenon of CSO. Go to the next slide. So in order to manage that for Newtown Creek, we're constructing a tunnel. You can see the tunnel here as the yellow line going along the creek itself. So that tunnel is going to pick up from four outfalls. These four outfalls constitute 90% of the flow that goes into Newtown Creek, CSO that enters the creek. This flow is going to be captured in the tunnel and then it will be sent towards the Newtown Creek Wastewater. Uh, this flow is going to be captured in the tunnel, and then it will be sent towards the Newtown Creek Wastewater Resource Recovery Facility where we'll be constructing a new tunnel de-watering pump station, which will then pump the flow out after a storm event. Uh, we're currently in design, and we have a consent order milestone to complete the work at the end of twenty forty. You know the next slide. So this is a graphic that kind of gives an overview of all of the components of the tunnel. Um, it's a little busy, but basically, uh, the the outfalls are located at the end of each branch of the creek, these four major outfalls. Um, at each outfall, we're going to reconstruct a diversion structure. There's already an outfall there. We're gonna reconstruct it to create a structure that will then send flow to a new shaft for each outfall, and that shaft will send the flow down into the tunnel. And you can kind of see the alignment of the tunnel. It starts at the bottom of the screen. It kind of loops around, and it ends at this orange uh rectangle that is the new pump station, and then that pump station will send the flow to the plant uh of new gravity sewer. And now I'm going to pass it over to um our folks from B P, Terrell or David.
Sure. Uh, good morning. This is David Lee. Um, so I'll be presenting um slides on the U L R P and environmental review, being prepared then uh by D E P. So given the scale of this project, this will require us um two different land use actions, um, combination of site selection and acquisition and site selection only. So this will be covered through two different appi- uh U L R P applications, as you see in the numbers here. Um, so site se- site selection and acquisition will allow the city, um, D E P to acquire the property, properties and site infrastructure and the non-city-owned properties. And then site selection would concern uh properties over the owned by the city, which allow for the citing of infrastructure. Um, next slide. So, in terms of how these two land use actions will be implemented within uh Queens Committee Board Two and Committee Board Five, um, the site selection and acquisition action would concern impact fifty-nine different properties within the two uh committee boards. And this should involve the site selection of a new city facility on private property, so the B B twenty-six diversion facility site, the construction of the C S O tunnel and diversion facilities, and then allow for the acquisition approval for subterranean easements, uh which should um protect the C S O tunnel from physical damage. And then the site selection only would cons- uh impact, affect si- six different properties located within Committee Board Two and Queens Committee Board Five. And this involves site selecting a new facility, new city facility, the N C Q seventy-seven diversion facility site on city-owned, on the city-owned property, which allow for the construction of the C S O tunnel and diversion facilities. And then noting out, that's zooming out in terms of looking at the over- um overall project area, this um, this, we're looking at a total of ninety-nine properties, and that all of them would be within um and industrial zoning, so there would be no displacement of any um residential properties or uh owners. Um, okay, uh, next slide. So this is how we're looking into the sup- so the majority of the acquisitions land use actions would involve subterranean easements. And this is a slide that covers that. So we're looking at a total of um sub- fifty-four subterranean easements that would be required in within Queens. And the subterranean easement zone begins roughly around, approximately around twenty, anywhere between twenty-five to seventy-five feet below the existing ground surface. And you can see, you can see this in the illustrative easement section here, um, which shows the the approximate depths. And then the tunnel itself would be anywhere between eighty to a hundred thirty feet below ground surface. And then the exact depths of this would be confirmed prior to the design being finalized later on. And they can see here there are two different zones. Um, one is the, what's we, it's called an exclusive subterranean easement zone well immediately on the tunnel itself, which will help protect the tunnel and give um and D E P had exclusive access to this area, enable us to maintain and operate the tunnel. And then above it, you see, uh, right above it, just um, and they were starting between seventy-five to twenty-five to seventy-five feet below grade. Um, you see what's called a non-exclusive subterranean easement zone. So there'd be two um easement zones, and the non-exclusive zone would allow for any future development unlike the exclusive zone. However, this um, so this, they're allowed for development, however, it would be subject to approval by D E P. Um, until allow us um safe access to, uh, safe access to the tunnel and so forth. So, and going on to the next slide. We're moving on to the um this acquisition of the site facility, um, facilities, the project. So this is the N C Q diversion facility site. This should involve um site selection of, site selection of a D E P owned lot here, as you can see in the, in the di- in the slide here. Um, lot twenty-six, and then full acquisition of two different, of uh, of two lots, which would be a combination of a privately owned parking area and a material storage facility here. Okay, okay, um, next slide. So once uh these properties are um side-selected and acquired, this will enable facilitate the construction of the N C Q seventy-seven diversion, diversion facilities and the drop shaft. Um, drop shaft structure, so that you can see the scope of work here. So it should be the construction of a permanent, the permanent N C Q seventy-seven diversion facility, and this include the drop shaft shaft um, drop shaft structure, diversion chamber, outfall structure, and flap gate chamber, and as well as um the construction of a permanent odor control system in a below-grade vault. And then um in terms of the construction duration, this uh work is ex- expected to last roughly around uh five and a half years to complete. That's a approximate um construction time. That's uh anticipated by D E P. And then moving on, um, noting that you see in the slide here, due to the proposed construction activities, um, the roads here, railroad place would be closed during construction, and then all, they can see here, there would be a temporary road. This is kind of show about showing the rough, the approximate layout, or how it looked like. And then alternative access to the site would, and the, and then Amazon distribution facility to the north of it would be provided by this temporary roadway, which would be opposite Fifty-Seventh Avenue, and then, as you can see in the diagram, it would connect to Forty-Ninth Street. Okay, um, moving on to the next slide. So we're moving on to the next uh, the uh facility that would be proposed to be constructed by D E P. So this would be the B B twenty-six diversion facility site, and then this would involve um D E P acquiring a per- permanent surface easement and temporary construction easements of three different privately owned properties within Committee Board Two. So this would involve um the acquisition of, well, um, actually, uh, acquisition of one property that's a privately owned concrete manufacturing facility. Now, uh, sorry, in correction, is um also this should involve two public-owned properties. This should be uh M T A L I R um own parking facility. And I can see in the, the lots here in the diagram here, and I'm going to the next slide. So one, um, once those two land action, land use actions are completed, the this will facilitate the construction of the permanent uh and B B twenty-six diversion facilities. Um, and this is showing the proposed layout, proposed conceptual layout of of how, what the site would look like and the different components. And this involved constructing a diversion facility, a diversion chamber, an outfall, all fall structure, and during construction, a temporary water treatment plant, and then temporary maintenance of flow channels during construction activities, as well as a permanent uh new diversion, uh, gravity diversion facility, um sewer connection to a separate drop shaft and within a city rider owns right away. And then the approximate, this is a work is expected to last approximately two years to complete. Then moving on to the, the environmental review being conducted by D E P, um, so this involves the environment impact statement, the E I S, uh specifically the, we are now preparing the, we issued a draft E I S uh back in September, and we are in the middle of preparing the final um E I F E I S. So, the E I S examines and discloses um potential adverse, significant adverse environmental impacts from the construction and operation of the C S O tunnel, and then associated infrastructures such as the diversion chambers and drop shafts. And you can see, we assessed a number of different impact categories, as you see in this um, this table here. And each technical analysis includes detailed consideration impacts that could occur from the construction of the proposed project, uh, i.e. the construction of their new C S O tunnel, and of the impacts once construction is completed and the proposed uh project is operational. Right, move on to the next slide. So, as, as mentioned, we issued, D E P issued a D I S last mon- last month, and according to the findings of the D I S, potential significant adverse impacts are anticipated specifically for traffic and noise during construction activities, as highlighted here by the red, in red. And in order to note that in regards to historic and ar- ar- archaeological resources, uh, both SHIPO and L P C were consulted by D E P, and they determined they had no concerns. And this, this was after um we consulted with both agencies about uh Phase One E S A, uh, Phase One A Archaeological Study at Calvera Cemetery. And then noting that um the Degnan Terminal Historic District and Architectural Resource within the Historic, Historic District um industrial building and garage at uh forty-seven dash oh nine thirtieth street are located within um Queens Committee Board Two. Again, based on the review, um, both SHIPO and L P C determined that no concerns about D E P's proposed project. Okay, um, and then noting that the con- traffic impacts would specifically come from construction worker and truck activities, as well as temporary disruptions to surrounding roadways and pedestrian facilities during peak uh construction periods. However, uh, no construction noise impacts are anticipated within either Committee Board Two or Committee Board Five. And then noting that three of the four facilities, um, intersections impacted by construction traffic are located within Committee Board Two. So this would be in, in connection to the proposed um, B B twenty-six diversion facility site. This would involve um the intersection of Greenpoint Avenue, Van Dam Street and Review Avenue. And that if um, if, if the, if D E P chooses to implement an open cut construction could, um, would displace parking on one of both sides of, like the roadways. However, um, travel would be maintained throughout construction activities. And um you can refer to the traffic transportation chapter of the D I S uh for additional information on this. And then moving on at the draft, draft uh shaft location, the worst-case scenario of construction along the west side of Review Avenue along um Thirty-Fifth Street and Greenpoint Avenue, and Van Dam Street wouldn't require narrowing the two, currently two-way roadway segment to only accommodate one direction of travel. And then potential impacts from these uh right-of-way disruptions would be most prominent during the typical um weekday, A M, midday, and P M, and Saturday midday slash uh a, um, afternoon peak periods. And moving on to uh the next inter- uh next two intersections that would be inter- um affected, uh, this would be the N C Q seventy-seven diversion facility site. So, activities related to that, so that would involve, if I, impact um Massapeff Avenue, intersection Massapeff Avenue, Rust Avenue, um, which is also overlaps with the Community Ward Five. Uh, commu- and then also the intersection of Fifty-Sixth Road and Forty-Ninth Street. So as noted, um, before in the presentation, rail, railroad place would be closed due to construction activities at the N C B, N C Q seventy-seven diversion facility site. However, alternative access to the site and Amazon distribution facility to the north would be provided by the temporary roadway opposite Fifty-Seventh Avenue, which would connect to Forty-Ninth Street. And again, you could uh refer to the Transportation Chapter of the D I S for additional information on this. Um, in terms of uh potential uh improvement measures, such as signal timing adjustments, um, et cetera, they have been recommended for D O T's consideration to mitigate significant adverse traffic impacts identified at the following intersection located within Community Board Two. So this would be the intersection at uh Greenpoint Avenue, Van Dam Street, and Review Avenue, specifically at Review Avenue. Uh, have noting that the operation of the proposed project would generate minimal travel activities and no disruptions to the surrounding tra- transportation network, and then no significant adverse impacts to tr- traffic elements such as sidewalks and crosswalks are anticipated. And that the areas where construction activities would um, would result in any adverse, significant adverse noise impacts are out located outside of Queens Committee Board Two and Committee Board Five. And those would be at the Newtown Creek Nature Walk and future North Henry Street Restoration Open Stays projects, which are located within Brooklyn Commut- um, area of Brooklyn Committee Board One. And next slide, please. Okay, and uh so, um, so we, we are currently in the U L R P process. So this project was certified on September fifteenth, and is currently in the Committee Board Review Phase. And can noting the major milestones, for example, the draft's scope of work was published um before, as part of the pre-certification milestone back in the February of this year. And the scoping meeting was held in uh, on March twelfth, twenty twenty-five. And then moving on forward to the more recent milestones, as mentioned, the D E I S was issued, completed and issued on September um twenty twenty-five. And the U L R P application was certified the same month, beginning of city's review. And then moving forward to February twenty twenty-six, we anticipate that F E I S will be completed and issued. And then moving forward to spring and April twenty twenty-six, uh, we anticipated around that time, the U L R P uh process will be completed. Uh, next slide. Now, as mentioned, this is a sl- um, this is a slide uh that shows a overview of the uh, the current schedule. As mentioned, the Committee Board Review Phase is currently uh started, and then this, and this will um go on until November twenty-fourth. So we have met with both, um, all three committee boards at this point and received their initial feedback. And then as we, as you can see here, this will kick off, this will be uh preceding the other stages of the U L R P review process, so um, review by your op- the Queens off, Borough President's Office, your office here, and then your counterparts in Brooklyn. And then this, which happened between uh November, December, and then the C P C's uh committee review. There'd be combined uh C P C public hearing and D I S hearing. Uh, we anticipate that happened anywhere between December to February of next year. And then um we anticipate issuing the F E I S by February of next year. And then I can see the next two uh final uh stages would be on the City Council Review in early spring. And then finally, as mentioned, we anticipate U L R P will be completed by um April twenty twenty-six. Uh, next slide. So this is um, zooming out, this is a bird's eye view of showing how the difference um of the total um timeframe that D D E P is projecting for this proposed project. We, as mentioned, we anticipate U L R P will be um completed by the second quarter of next year. And then this would overlap, uh, this would kick off the start of the land acquisition process of the different, um, different properties that we would need to acquire in order to uh implement, uh, construct and implement a proposed project. And this will move on to the end of twenty twenty-eight, and this would overlap with the first of three um different um construction um packages that um D E P has prepared for this, uh, in order to construct the proposed project. So this would include, this would be called a C P one, which would involve a site prep at a, um, Department of Sanitation-owned site. And then this will move on to the other stages, uh, other uh subsequent uh construction packages, which are focused on the second one. C P two would focus on the diversion, constructing diversion facilities and the C S O tunnel itself. And then finally, uh, moving on to this, uh, C P three. So this would involve um constructing the proposed tunnel de-watering pump station, and this would um go on till approximately around um end of twenty forty. Okay. Uh, right, that concludes D E P's uh presentation for your office. Uh, please let us know if you have any questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you. That was a very comprehensive overview of these applications. So, um, I'm gonna ask, uh, Mohammed, do you have any questions? Okay, so our borough engineer has no questions. Um, I also do not have any questions um at this time, so. And I don't believe we have anyone sign up to publicly testify on this application. Um, a borough board date is forthcoming, um, so we will see you again um sometime in either November or December. Um, so I'm gonna go ahead and thank you and close this item.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and then by closing this item, I'm also going to close this hearing. So our next scheduled hybrid land use public hearing is Thursday, November twentieth, starting at nine thirty A M. I want to thank everyone for joining us today. Have a great day.
Thank you.